Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistel?
Here.
Dr. Pike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here.
Shelby Vaughn? Morgan Sirianni?
Here.
Citizens' comments?
Nicole Demagol, Nancy Brannigan, and Marcy Benz.
Hi, I'm Nancy. I was actually going to see if I could request a private meeting just because the issues that I need to discuss, I need to bring up personal names, and I don't really want to do that in public or on camera.
Have you spoken with the principal about this?
Yes.
Is this something that Dr. Scott and I could help you with?
It's something that I would like somebody to help me with, whether it's you or the entire board.
Would it be okay if maybe you spoke with either Dr. Scott or myself, and we could work on the situation?
I'm willing to speak to whoever will listen and address the issue.
Yeah, we will be happy to chat with you. You call tomorrow?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, great.
Is that tonight?
Could you, I could speak with you after the board meeting. I don't know what Dr. Scott's schedule is, but we could chat with you tomorrow.
I would like to do it tonight. Unfortunately, I have to work tomorrow, so it's going to be kind of rough to, I mean, I've wasted an entire day today trying to deal with the issues.
We'll see you after the board meeting. That's all right?
Yeah, that'll be great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Love?
I've been attending, of course, board meetings for quite some time, and I attended the roundtable discussion and received some information from, I guess, some citizens that handed out some stuff. So that got me interested in digging for some of my own information. And so I put together this packet of some information that I thought was pertinent in regards to some of the stuff that I received. I am property owner, and of course, I am a parent of children in the district. You'll see there, I've cited some definitions and sources, just so that we're clear on what things mean. Arithmetic mean is, of course, obtained by adding several quantities together and dividing the sum by the number of quantities. It's also called the average. Per capita is known for each individual person, and median is the middle number given in a sequence of numbers such as 1, 3, 4, 8, 9, that just represents the actual middle number. My sources, I found most of them fairly easily. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, PDE's website, a site called Proximity One, some information from, of course, Southmoreland School District. What I found was that through my research, that forty-eight percent, forty-eight and a half percent of families in Southmoreland School District in 2009 earned more than $50,000. And the mean family income for Southmoreland School District was $57,000. And that's just for Southmoreland School District, people living in the district. And 2009 was the latest data they had available. 2009 information also showed a per capita of $21,432. That was right during the crunch of the recession, I believe, 2009. So I looked at some of the personal income and to see if people indeed had raises over the years. And so what you'll see on the chart here titled "Personal Income" is, just by the numbers, without inflation, personal income was $28,000 in 2003 and $35,000 in 2009. And if you adjust that for inflation, that's $33,000 and $35,000, which is actually a raise of about $2,200. And that goes by all taxpayers. Southmoreland School District taxpayer wages, data shows that the taxpayers had an increase of 6 percent, 6.1 percent, from 2003 to 2009. Again, this includes minimum wage workers, doctors, lawyers, bankers, everybody. From the PDE website, I found information about the Southmoreland School District teachers, and I compared that with information found in the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. And what I found was that in 2001, the average teacher made $49,000 in this district, and in 2011, $54,000. When you adjust that for inflation, the 2001 teacher today should be making $62,000 while they're still only making $54,000. And then I compared that to a professional in business services, which is comparable in education to a teacher, and they rose from $35,000 to $55,000, which, of course, if you adjust for inflation, that's about $45,000 to $55,000. So what the data shows is that teachers in Southmoreland School District over the last 10 years have actually lost $7,800, not gained any money. Decrease in pay by 12.6 percent, while other professionals have gained by $10,000 or 22%. I looked at the teaching staff here at Southmoreland, and in regards to enrollment, in 2002, '03, we had 2,300 students, 2,312, 160 teachers on staff. 2011, 12, 1,992 students, 146 teachers on staff, which is a decrease of 16 teachers. A decrease of 13.8 percent in population of students, 8.75 in teaching staff. I also did and adjusted for teaching staff because just recently, we added four teaching positions for full-day kindergarten, which we hadn't had in the past. So that was an addition. And we also added just two recently autistic support teachers. So if we take those six off, the teacher decline in Southmoreland School District is actually about 12 and a half percent, which is pretty close to what the student decline is. And you can see the supporting data for that. Budgets, I looked at some of the school district budgets. People think that our budget is a lot, so I took, and actually, 20 years ago, I requested the budget. It was $14,270, or $14,270,000. This year's proposed budget, which of course is just proposed, it may be lower than that, hopefully it is, is $26 million. So when I took that same number of 1991, and I run it through an inflation calculator, it comes up to close $24 million, or $23,853,000. So fairly close. I know $2 million doesn't sound close to a lot of people, but we also have to realize that $26 million is just a projected number at this point, it's not the actual. And also that in 1997, we had special education regulations come through that required us to, the district, to hire teachers and put a lot of strains on the district financially because of that. Anybody have any questions?
Are you familiar with the fact-finding report on the demographics for the Southmoreland School District?
I was not given that, no. All my information come from the cited sources that I have, that I have here.
Your mediator, your fact-finder requested this information. This was done by our attorney?
Mm-hmm.
I think you should look at it.
If somebody will forward me a copy, I'll be glad to.
Your union has it.
Thank you. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes in the March 1, March 8, and April 4, 2012 meetings.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. All those in favor?
Discussion, please, Mike. Obviously, obviously, those meetings, the minutes of the meeting that was held here. April 4. Obviously, everything was deleted from that, from those minutes. There are other serious mistakes in some of the others, but I was shocked at the amount of information that was deleted. Thank you.
I mean, we're used to every single detail being put into all of our minutes. I think the most important things were covered. I mean, our quote comments may have not been word-for-word, but I don't know legally, with according to PSBA, if every single word that comes out of our mouth has to be documented. So I think as long as all the basic main points, our board secretary was not here, so Mr. Salem did the best that he could. I mean, I don't know what you're looking for that was admitted that, I mean, our every single comment, is that what?
Every single comment made by our retired business manager on his six-figure pension was recorded, Jesse.
But that wasn't when Mr. Salem took minutes, was it?
That's too bad. We don't change the minutes on the meeting. You change the rules for every meeting?
No.
Then let's decide.
Well, I believe the meeting was recorded, so anybody that needed to get word-for-word can watch it.
Well, then you should stop doing all this other stuff for all the other meetings, too. They should be one-line pages. Peggy, let's do a one-line page now.
I mean, I think Mr. Salem did a wonderful job for the, for what he was here for. I mean, he's not obviously quote a board secretary. I mean, what are we, what are you looking for that do you want put in?
I guess maybe the same number of lines that Bill Porter got? Would that be okay?
Would you like us to look at the guidelines that are put out through PSBA and through some of the parliamentary guides and see what maybe is available in policy and develop a policy that has to do with how minutes are done and that way it would be done in a consistent fashion throughout?
Number one, we don't have a policy committee. But number two, all I'm saying is, since I've been on the board, this is how it's been done. Now all of a sudden, we change. For one meeting? Yes. Peggy wasn't here. Yes, yes, yes. It covered what we needed to cover. No. Let's move on. No, it didn't.
I would just like to say, it was, it was not my intent to paint any particular board member in an unfavorable light. I'm sorry that if I offended you, it wasn't my intent. I think that my minute-taking was sufficient to meet the requirements of your legal minutes. It certainly wasn't what you're used to, I admit. But by that same token, I think that Mrs. Tarson goes above and beyond what is required of minutes. So having said that again, I'm sorry if you feel slighted. I thought it captured the gist of what everybody had to say, and the most important thing, the votes, were there.
I've actually come to expect that, but thank you.
Let me ask this question. Last week, when we had discussion and minutes was on the agenda to be discussed, you could have brought up them as if people have done in the past.
I'm explaining my vote. I'm explaining my vote. I'm not allowed to talk once the voting starts. I'm explaining my vote. Rules of order.
That's fine. I'm just saying, if you had have brought it up last week, could you please add this, or could you change this, that it could have been discussed, and it could have been added or deleted or changed at the discussion part of the minutes part of the agenda? That's why we have a discussion meeting to set the agenda.
I'm at fault, Mike. I'm the one who's wrong.
No, I'm saying we could have corrected.
Please proceed, please proceed to vote. You know, you know what I'm saying. Everybody does.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes eight to one. Business and finance, fund accounts?
It is recommended that the board approve the revenue report, expenditure report, bills payable, and accounts payable for March 2012, and treasuries reports for February and March 2012.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Roll call from District Greshamton. Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. All business, approval of policy 703 sanitary management?
It is recommended that the board adopt the revisions to policy 703 sanitary management that has been posted for 30 days.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love. Questions?
I have a question about all three of them, the three that are coming up. In each of these policies, as well as any of the other policies in our school district, does it state anywhere what happens or what the consequences are if that policy is not followed?
No, generally, that would not be a policy, but rather an administrative regulation. One of my goals is to develop administrative regulations to match each of our policies.
Okay, so we don't have anything? So if someone chooses not to follow these, there's no consequence that we can look at, right?
There's no consequence as part of the policy.
But wouldn't though administratively, if there would be a problem that the policy's not followed, it would be, whether it be principal or part of your team, there would be a follow-up on that?
Yes, that's correct.
That would be true of any of the policies.
Reason I ask is when our gymnasium had all that garbage and stuff in it, there was no, no consequence to that, and that was the same situation. It's been modified now. But back then, and I'm looking at a number of policies that are not, not followed, nothing, there's no consequence. I just wondered how that works in the system.
There's no consequence spelled out in the policy, you are correct.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
No.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes eight to one. Approval of policy 821 classroom decorum?
It is recommended that the board adopt the revisions to policy 821 classroom decorum that has been posted for 30 days.
Motion? So moved. Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions? Roll call, please.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Approval of policy 210.1 inhalers and epi pens?
It is recommended that the board adopt policy 210.1 inhalers and epi pens that has also been posted for 30 days.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, question? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Business, science curriculum?
It is recommended that the board approve the selected science curriculum, McMillan-McGraw-Hill for elementary, LabAids for the middle school, Lenko-McGraw-Hill for secondary science, in addition to whole for advanced placement chemistry and physics, and Pearson for biology.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski, questions?
Is there a cost? Or an overall ballpark figure?
$200,000.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. List of graduates?
It is recommended that the board approve pending the completion of required credits the list of 2012 graduates that was presented at the April 12 discussion meeting.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Love, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Presley Ridge contract?
It is recommended that the board approve an educational services contract between Southmoreland School District and Presley Ridge to June 8, 2012, for a student to attend the day school of Presley Ridge's Greensburg location.
Motion? So moved. Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, questions?
Yeah, that's just for another month or so, isn't it?
Right.
Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero. Westmoreland County Student Assistance Program?
It is recommended that the board approve the annual Westmoreland County Student Assistance Program agreement for the 2012-2013 school year.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel, questions?
This is a no-cost study, isn't it?
Right.
Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Proposal for 2013 PSBA legislative platform?
It is recommended that the board support legislation which removes work stoppage and strikes as bargaining tactics in the collective bargaining process.
Motion?
So moved, seconded.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second by Dr. Pike. Questions?
Levi, were you submitted this into the, is that how you do it?
Right, it actually goes through the board. Our board secretary will submit it.
Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
I'm going to stay.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, one and one. Change to May 3, 2012 discussion meeting to a voting meeting.
It is recommended that the board change the May 3, 2012 discussion meeting to a voting meeting for general purposes and to improve bids for the Stadium Pipe Project.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Question under motion?
Question.
Does that mean we're not having a meeting on the 10th as well, or are we?
We haven't made that decision yet because we don't know what may be coming up in the next month, but we definitely have to vote on the 3rd so that we can get this pipe project underway.
Okay.
So if it seems like it's going to be a small agenda, and if it's all right with the board, we might be able to do it all on the 3rd. If not, we'll have to come back.
Okay, thanks. You could do planning in that on the 3rd, couldn't you? That could still be a planning meeting.
Yeah.
We've done that before.
Yes, yes, we've done that.
But you're saying this is, this won't be a planning meeting?
Planning and voting.
We want it to be a planning and voting.
Okay, okay, it just says to discuss, change it from discussion to voting. So it would be both a voting meeting and then a planning meeting.
Right.
But the voting meeting would just be special purpose.
Are you willing to amend your motion to that effect?
I will.
I will.
Sure.
Mr. Beistel, thank you.
Any more questions?
Will they be the 3rd and the 10th then, as far as you know?
As far as I know.
As far as you know, so it doesn't really change?
Right.
Part, okay.
The only thing is, we're going to vote on the 3rd to get that pipe underway.
I understand.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, motion passes nine to zero.
Mike, are you saying that we would pass the budget then on the 10th of May? It'd be the final?
Probably, we'd usually have the voting meeting end of May.
Have one after that.
We have to post it for at least 30 days. It's doubtful that it would be quite ready by May 10.
That's okay, I'm just asking. Okay, there would be something else.
Probably so, yes.
That's fine.
Budget meeting April 26, 2012?
It's recommended that the board schedule a budget meeting for April 26 at 6:00 PM at the middle school cafeteria.
Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes, question?
Is this for the public, or is this just for the board?
Public.
It is public?
Yes.
Roll call.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alts?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero. Need a motion to recess to executive session?
Question.
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 Question. Question.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second. Second, my Mr. Beistel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Miller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Back in session. Data day substitute list?
It is recommended that the board approve additions to the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve data day substitute list.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Kaufman, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Beistel, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alts?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
Girls' basketball coach?
It is recommended that the board approve Brian Pritz as the head girls varsity basketball coach.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Love, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Alts, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alts?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
No.
Motion passes eight to one. Assistant little four girls volleyball coach?
It is recommended that the board approve Christina Gabonay as the assistant middle school girls volleyball coach.
Motion. So be. Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Alts, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alts?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Pike?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes. Motion passes nine to zero.
Board meeting location?
It is recommended that the board consider other locations to hold board meetings and authorize administration to explore options and make a recommendation to the board.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alts, second.
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Kaufman, question?
Um, just a question. I know, um, we talked about this a little bit last week, but another question came to my mind that when, I know there's a lot more extra time involved to set up. And are the people that are setting up and taking down being compensated for their extra time? Or is it like, um, you know, when it's a coach, they put in all these different hours, but they only get a certain amount? Is that how it is for these people that are?
The custodians that are setting up the chairs and the furniture and so on are doing that as part of their regular workday. So there's nothing extra involved there. Mr. Pollard does put in some extra time, and I believe Mr. Pollard has the opportunity to turn in an extra time sheet as needed.
I just wanna, I don't wanna take advantage of anybody. I mean, this, how we have moved closer seems to be, I like this. I mean, I still don't know, like, I don't get to see it on T V because I don't have that Comcast or Armstrong, but, so I don't know what it's like as far as hearing, but I've heard a lot of people saying it's hard to hear. On YouTube, it seems okay when I watch it on YouTube, but has anybody else? It is hard to hear.
To tell you the truth, I'd really consider voting to get back down there since we set it up like this here. I think it's more in context to people, and you can hear better the whole night.
Yeah, we can hear. You can hear each other better.
You can hear each other better here.
I can, I can too. I haven't had a hearing problem, but I, uh, I meet various places. I do like this, and I wasn't looking for it, but I like the fact that there's plenty of space. It doesn't feel crowded, uh, if people come, uh, that they kinda find your, find your own place here. Plenty of rooms, but I, whatever, yeah.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alts?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
No.
Dr. Pike?
No, because I think we could possibly even close that building down there, so. I think it's bad down there, so I think we just, this is fine. I just wanna tell you, I've been to a lot of school board meetings throughout this district within PSBA, and they do have exactly like this, this is where ninety-nine percent of them are.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Benz?
No.
Motion passes two. Fail, seven fails. Fail, two, seven, zero.
Let's just go to talk about it. It doesn't matter. It really. I mean, really, it's because, I mean, I didn't know, and it looked as broad as better, so. Yeah, it's just good to know. Communication, right?
Resolution to approve the K O E Z.
You have a resolution in front of you to approve a Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone. It is a two and a half page resolution, and I would prefer not to read it unless someone really wants me to. But what I thought we could do is if we get a motion and a second on the floor during our discussion portion, we do have April Koppis and Jason Rigoni with us this evening, and they can answer any questions for us that we might have.
I move we adopt the motion as it stands, the resolution to approve the K O E Z.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Beistel, questions?
I just wanted to point out a couple of favorable developments about this. I did inquire with the pilot agreement that had been passed last year, and all the taxing districts had signed off on it. And PETA, I have a letter from council that's involved with this, where people actually at RITC, that it's gone to PETA and they've signed off on it, and now it's down to one attorney in Harrisburg who has to sign off on it. Also, I was given, by actually two of the entities involved, the actual lease that the Pennsylvania Industrial Development Authority as landlord has given the RITC Regional Road Fund tenant, which is the entity with which we're dealing with on the pilot. And, um, that is signed, sealed, and delivered, so I view that as a favorable development that, you know, the things that had to happen have happened, and reduce the possibilities and opportunities for strange series of events that would cause us to lose out on the existing pilot. So I'm actually more positive about this from a legal perspective now that I have this additional information. And I feel that it's a legal thing to request, but also you have discretion. You don't have to do this, so you have considerations about economic development in United County and in our East Honeck Township, which is part of our school district, to consider and the opportunities for employment, and the, also the possibility of trying to fill up the old Sony plant faster so that we would get to maximum payment on our existing payment and bill of taxes agreement. The faster they get tenants in there, then the faster we get to receive and reach our maximum payment. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions, I could slice and baste this for a half hour, but I'm sure you're all not interested in having to go through that.
Other questions for Jason or April there here also, you folks wanna step forward? The board may have some questions for you, you individuals.
Jason, my question is, tell me about Aquion Energy.
Well, Aquion Energy is a startup business that was.
Jason, could you pull that mic up a little closer?
I'm just afraid.
Thank you.
Aquion Energy is a startup business that was founded by a professor out of Carnegie Mellon University. The product is a power storage device, in other words, it's a new battery system. It's eco-friendly, it is, has more sustainability, longer life. There's a lot of advantages to this new product, I can go into detail about the product itself. But the business itself is going from product development to the commercialization stage, meaning that it's not necessarily doing the research and development, but actual manufacturing. They chose, they went through a site selection process over the last six months and decided to locate its first factory in the former, the R I D C Westmoreland site.
When Aquion wanted to come to this site, what did they do? Pick up the phone and call you and say, hey, Jason, I wanna come out there? How did this come about?
Now, actually, the process that they went through was hiring a national site selection consultant. That consultant didn't come out and say, hey, we wanna look at this site. They went out to the state, Pennsylvania, as Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith was here last week, had alluded to that this site selection process, actually, we were in competition with about four or five other states. It was narrowed down to those four or five other states. I'm sure this consultant had actually talked or had asked for proposals from all states, but it was narrowed down to four or five for a shortlisted, shortlist of states. This particular site here was the only site that they looked at in Pennsylvania. Part of that was because of their proximity, the founder works at C M U.
What did the other states offer?
I'm not privy to that information, they did not release it.
I spent quite a bit of time trying to find out about Aquion Energy, and I, I was quite surprised at what I found out. Quite surprised. Yes, it did start in two thousand seven, Dr. Whitaker down at Carnegie Mellon. They have two locations, one is Thirty-Ninth Street in Pittsburgh, and the other one is Silicon Valley, California. Nowhere in anything I could find, under any circumstances, does it tell me how many employees they have. Do you know if they have any employees?
Currently, they have approximately seventy employees in the Lawrenceville location.
They have seventy?
Correct. The Silicon Valley location that you're referring to is the location of their venture capital firm. The venture capital firm of Kleiner.
Perkins, Caulfield.
Yeah, Caulfield funded their, provided a large amount of funding to go from product development to commercialization. So, being that they are the major funder, one of the major funders with this project, and that's probably why they're listing that as a location.
Okay, they list their investors as K P C B, that's Kleiner, Perkins, Caulfield, and Byers. And they are a world-leading venture capital firm located in Menlo Park in Silicon Valley. They are the largest and most established venture capital firm in the world, according to their information. But they have four other investors. One is the United States Department of Energy, Foundation Capital, Advanced Technology Ventures, and Triple Point Capital, who also happen to be the primary financiers of YouTube and Facebook. So these are big, big, big people, big players. But then they list their team, Aquion Energy lists a team, and I just did one page of it. It's Oberlin College, Michigan State, Harvard, Carnegie Mellon, California Institute of Technology, Bard College, Emerson College, M I T., Penn State, Pitt, Seattle, the University of Sheffield, thinking that's England, Washington and Jefferson, the Jet Propulsion Laboratory, the Rochester Institute of Technology, the U S Army, Microsoft, Intel, Duracell, Honda, Mitsubishi, and Delph University Technology. They have a management team that's quite big. Their C E O is Scott Pearson, and then their founder and their chief technical officer is the Professor J Whitaker. They have John Connolly as their C F O, then they have a bunch of V Ps, Amy Higgins, Don Humphries, Dan Volk, or Ted Wiley. And on their board of directors, they have the managing partner at K L C B, and we'll talk about them because that's a big deal to me. They have C E Os, their founders, more partners, that kind of thing. But what surprised me is when I looked at K P C B. This Kleiner, Perkins, Caulfield, and Byers is a massive group, and I'm not very knowledgeable about this stuff, but it seems to me there's this giant web of investment that exists. It's like this big thing that goes out with all these investors. They have fifty-three partners, plus they have eight more who are partner at Meritimes. They, um, some of their people include Al Gore and Colin Powell, and basically, they build themselves as green technology, green technology. Some of the firms, some of the firms in which these people have major business interests are Amazon dot com, America Online, Compaq, Google, Lotus, Netscape, Zynga, Apple, iPhone and iPod Touch, and recently invested five hundred millions in the Green Growth Fund, and their goal is to find solutions to the world's climate crisis. So I'm reading all this, and this is the big question that keeps popping up in my mind. Why would these people need a tax abatement from us?
Well, first of all, they did choose the site without the K O Z being there, number one. Do they need it? Why would they need it? Well, that's a question that I guess I would say that, from the standpoint that, um, they're gonna go there whether the K O Z is there or not. That's, I mean, part of this was discussed with and by the state, whether the K O Z was something that would go to the site. But they chose the site before any decisions were being made. Okay? Corporations like this, obviously, first of all, we should take a look at it from the standpoint that we should feel fortunate that they chose the site that they're looking at investing seventy million dollars in equipment to go into the site. So it is a major investment going into it. And a business from the, especially from the outset, when you're going to that commercialization stage, there's always a, from a standpoint of cash flow, that getting off the ground is always a difficult thing. I'm not saying that that's what the K O Z is there for, it's not, that's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is that this is a startup business moving forward, and any assistance we can get them because really, it's a startup business. Many startup businesses don't ever get beyond reality, you know, what they're projecting, because business plans are always business plans, and they always, they always project positive news. That doesn't necessarily gonna meet them. So we're all crossing our fingers that this is gonna move forward, they're gonna create the jobs that they, that they say they're gonna create. And we're, you know, that we also are grateful, I guess that's not the right term, we're also very supportive, and I think it's a great thing that they're investing the kind of money at that site moving forward. So why do they need a K O Z? They chose the site without any guarantees that there's a K O Z there.
So they're coming anyhow.
They've already made the decision, they've already made that announcement. Okay?
That's a little different.
But, Dr. Pike, okay, but, Dr. Pike, part of that is that they're only taking around two hundred sixty-five thousand or two hundred fifty thousand square feet of the building. Possibilities of growing, so it's ten percent of the building. You have the other ninety percent of the building subtracting out the existing tens with solar power and D N P. So at that point, you're at about twenty percent of the building leased. You still have almost two million square feet available that needs to be marketed. You still have almost 2 million square feet available that needs to be marketed. So, the Koz is not necessarily there for Aquion, but is there to attract new businesses to fill up the rest of the space.
That makes more sense to me. It's the Aquion that I can't wrap my head around. You have down here, or I guess I should say, Mr. Potomac has here, somebody has here, that this K O E Z is comprised of parcels that are occupied by a business which creates or retains at least 1,400 full-time jobs in Pennsylvania within three years from the designation of the proposed zone, and makes a capital investment of at least $750 million in the K O E Z within three years. Can you explain that?
Yeah, that actually, this part of the legislation deals with if it's already occupied. This site isn't 100% occupied. So, if you, there are others across the state that businesses are currently conducting business in that geographic area.
Okay, it says here, it's comprised of parcels which are deteriorated, underutilized, unoccupied, or occupied.
Correct. So, it's not occupied. Occupied then refers to the 1,400 jobs and the, I think it's 700 million investment.
Okay, where's that going to come from? The $750 million?
That's a requirement for the business, so it has to be an occupied site, which this is not. So, it's not pertinent to that. But if you have a site where a business already is located, they are obligated to have 1,400 jobs or that amount of investment.
That's to backfit them as an opportunity zone?
Correct. So, it's not applicable to either of the sites.
So, that doesn't matter here?
What would happen is to be qualified, you actually have to qualify as a business, and there, there are three different criteria, not in your resolution, but the Koz guidelines. So, there is a job creation requirement, there's a capital investment requirement. Oh, thank you, Bill. Don't have to hold it then. Or making a certain amount of lease payments. So, that, what you're referring to is if the site, you know, statewide, there might be a site completely occupied, a business is full throttle, they have to have those job requirements and/or investment requirements. Neither of our sites are occupied.
Let's get back to this. So, if Aquion is coming anyhow, we don't have to give them anything, and we can tax them at a rate that we tax people, right?
No.
No, not, no, okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Potomac.
The pilot, the property is owned by PETA. We can't tax them, real estate tax directly, because it's owned by a Commonwealth instrumentality entity.
Okay.
We only receive or have the possibility of receiving payments in UWA tax or an occupancy and service charge because the pilot, payment and UWA tax's resolution was offered and was accepted by us last spring, summer, summer, and has subsequently been adopted by the township and the county, and now recently has been signed off on by PETA also, that they don't have an objection. If you did not have that agreement, you could get zero in the way of school district tax. Now, your other point, or what you were referring to by we, the state has a different set of taxes, and they could collect capital franchise tax, and I can't do all these from memory because I don't deal with them, but a lot of state taxes. So, if, if the local taxing districts, including Southmoreland, all agree to this, and the state agrees to it, then those state taxes get abated also. So, it's not just us, it's also the state, Pennsylvania.
David, we are Pennsylvania.
I understand that, but there are two, there are multiple levels of taxing districts, each of which have different taxing powers.
But our vote is taking all of them away, is what it's doing, other than that 13 cents.
We only control us. The state would still have to agree to the state taxes, and the county would, and the East Huntington Township would also have to agree to this. But we can't, we don't control the state taxes.
But here's this huge net of money coming in here. You know, I looked at, if you, one of the things that I, I was hoping I could do is maybe you give me my, my house at 13 cents a square foot, and I calculated that everybody's taxes would go down 75% if we all got 13 cents a square foot for our houses. So, I'd like to have that, believe me, I would. But it bothers me that, you know, you're telling me though, that this, the legislature passed laws.
Yeah, this is the state legislature, yes.
The legislature did this to us. They put this in this position.
Well, not just us, it's themselves, they put themselves in the position, also to give up state taxes. Is that a good idea? That's for the state?
That's incredible. That's incredible.
The thing that you have to think about too is that, and we talked about this last week, is that a lot of projects won't consider Pennsylvania unless these types of programs are available. Is that great? No. But we are in competition with other states. If you want to, you know, the next Aquion that comes down the road that say they're not from CMU, we don't have that advantage that they're local, but they're going to, then it's a great opportunity, good, you know, eco-friendly type of project, or whatever the case may be, it's in manufacturing, you create a lot of jobs. You know, sites like this won't be considered if you don't have these kind of programs available. Is that, is that what you want to hear? No. I don't want to be, I don't want to have to go through that either. I think that it'd be great that if all the states said, we're not going to have these kind of programs. But that's not the case. That's the way it is. If we want to be competitive on these projects, these are the types of programs we need to be, that needs to be available. The benefit, we talked about this as well last time, is that the taxes that you're giving up, because we already have the pilot agreement, you know, approved and executed, and we moved forward on that last spring, the other taxes that the East Huntington Township, the county, or I should say, East Huntington Township in, in Southmoreland School District giving up, would be by the program, would be the occupational privilege tax, business privilege tax, those types of things, but you don't have any of those. East Huntington Township never approved any, the school district, so you're not giving up those portions. So, in reality, you're, you as the school board aren't giving up anything. You have the pilot in place, you know, it was executed last year. It's really the state that is moving forward, if they approve this, that are actually giving up the taxes at that point, the ones that are identified in the program.
Jason, governments don't yield prosperity. Government money doesn't make prosperity. Private investment does. And it's like, we're taking the money from our taxpayers. You know, if, if Josie and Gail are going to run for the board again, and they win, and they're sitting here three, four, five years down the road, you don't even have this. You're going to be slapping taxes on people to pay your bills because we're making a commitment. See, I guess what surprised me is the first time this vote came up, and I voted against it, it doesn't matter, but the first time this vote came up, I thought we were done with it. I never dreamed that we were going to be designating zones and doing this stuff again. And from what I'm hearing, this may keep on going, huh?
Well, when we were here talking about the pilot, we weren't voting on, you weren't voting on the Koz the last time I was here.
No, but I never dreamed that this stuff was going to keep coming up, and there's probably more coming up, isn't there?
Not, again, the Koz legislation was not even discussed last year when I was there. So, there's no, I mean, what could change next year? Well, you know, the whole taxing system could change by, between now and next, the next year.
Jason, could you explain, you know, the, about the finite number of K O E zones, K O E Z zones that can be designated within the state based on current law? Is there a finite number?
Yeah, the new legislation has four this year and 15 next year. That's what the new legislation has. So, we are going in looking for one of those four designations statewide for this year.
Well, Jason, you said we were going to lose, you were sure they were going to lose money for the first six years.
Who's that?
Did you say that? You don't expect, you expect them to lose money?
Managing the building, the way they perform, it just, I mean, obviously, it depends on if the building gets filled up fast? No, I mean, obviously, it's a better situation.
Are you asking about RITC or are you asking about Aquion?
Well, I didn't say that about Aquion.
I think it was Aquion.
Which were you asking?
Regional industrial that was going to lose money by refurbishing the building.
That's that $65 million that that guy was going to put into it, or is he putting his money in Aquion?
No, he's putting the money, it's not, he's not, it's his organization, his nonprofit organization is reinvesting into the building itself, into the site.
And it's an empty building?
There's two tenants in there right now, Solar Power Industries and DNP.
Who's the second one?
DNP, Dyon Nippon Printing, they've been there for, I don't know how many years.
Jason, what plans, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of talk about plans for the future for some major companies to come in there. Do you know of anybody who's going to come in besides Aquion?
At this point, there's nothing, there's nothing to commit to. Projects, there's, there are companies looking at the site, but nothing is set in stone, there's no commitments, there's not, I'll say, there's not even ones at this point that are, as we say in marketing, there's, there's tire kickers, there's people looking at the site, but there's nothing, there's any commitment at this point.
So, there is a development going on with infrastructure, water, things like that?
No, part of, part of the funding that was provided by the state was to do utility separations in the building. So, yeah, there's, there's going to be work going on to get the building ready to, for marketing it to those kind of companies that can come in.
And the state is doing that?
State is providing funding for that, correct.
How much?
They provided $10 million R A C P grant.
R A C P?
Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant.
Sorry if I don't know that. But what I can't understand is why this multi, multi, multi-million dollar organization requires a tax sacrifice from us or anybody else. I, I don't get it. I just don't get it. And as far as the jobs go, forgive me if I'm a doubter, I think one of the reasons Pennsylvania has the problems that it has is because it's not a right-to-work state, and that's where the stuff is going, and efforts, we've seen that all over the country with Seattle and everybody else who's tried to stop that. But I also, secondly, I see it as a green company. If they produce a battery, and this is what I, this is just what I know, everything that is green ends up costing 75 times more than non-green, and they're going out of business. So, if they produce these batteries, and every one of these batteries is $2,000 and they can't sell them, you know, what happens? I, I don't have a lot of faith in green industries. I guess that's, that's another real concern I have, whereas I looked at Sony and I looked at Volkswagen, it's much more concrete, and this is more conceptual, you know. They may never bring more than, and those 75 people that are working in Pittsburgh, they're going to come with them, aren't they? They're coming with them.
Actually, I, I don't believe so. I believe most of those are staying in Lawrenceville, and they're, and they're going to be picking up all new jobs at the site.
Oh, they're going to have two places that they're in here?
They have their research and development location down in Lawrenceville.
So, they'll have two places here and there. Okay, I just, I don't think it's fair to us, but I also understand that it's the legislature that apparently did it to us.
More questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt? Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes 801, student discipline matter 2011, 2012, number 105.
Thank you, Jason and April. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is recommended that the board adopt the decision of the board as a committee of the whole, and that the adjudication in the matter of the above identified student disciplinary action be, and is hereby ratified in all respects to the same extent as set forth therein as the action of the board of school directors in the Southmoreland School District, and the administration is directed to take all actions consistent herewith, and the secretary is to send copies of the adjudication in this resolution to the effect of student and parent and guardian by certified mail.
Motion? No move. Motion, my Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Rhodes, roll call please.
I'm sorry, I, I was asked, and I gave an opinion to Mrs. Kaufman that she abstained from this vote.
Roll call please. Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Abstained.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes 801, student discipline matter 2011, 2012, number 106.
It is recommended that the board adopt the decision of the board as a committee of the whole, and that the adjudication in the matter of the above identified student disciplinary action be, and hereby is ratified in all respects to the same extent as set forth therein as the action of the board of school directors of the Southmoreland School District, and the administration is directed to take all actions consistent herewith, and the secretary is to send copies of the adjudication and this resolution to the effect of student and parent or guardian by certified mail.
Motion? No move. Motion, my Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Love, roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Abstained.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes 801, excuse report.
Sounds like it.
You want to say, congratulations to March's Scotty Scholar, Caitlin Westling, and March's Spirit of Southmoreland student, Rory Keifer. April is Autism Awareness Month. Youth Education Association, YEA, Mr. Fabian's class participated in the March of Parks for the sixth year. Students raised nearly $1,000 to be used to continue to improve Westmoreland County's parks and hold annual events such as Buddy Day and the Hop Goblin Hikes, which YEA participated. YEA will be asking everyone to wear blue on Monday, April 2nd, on World Autism Awareness Day. YEA held its sixth annual T-shirt sale with proceeds benefiting Autism Speaks. This year's theme was Southmoreland, we, we are a piece of the puzzle, and you see Mr. Polakowski is wearing it. And YEA will be selling puzzle pieces in the SHS lunches to benefit Autism Speaks. The 2012, 2013 scheduling is underway. Councilors began classroom visits by grade level, letting students know of new course requests. P S S A testing began on March 15th and will continue through April. A kickoff ceremony was held on March 14th to motivate all 11th graders that will be P S S A testing. Canoe tickets will go on sale April 25th at the high school from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They are $23. The Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center Senior Recognition Ceremony will be May 7th at 7:00 p.m. at the Westmoreland County Community College. The junior and senior prom will be May 18th at the Willow Room. The grand march will be in the auditorium at 5:45. The Spirit of, of Southmoreland Banquet will be held at Bell's Banquets at 6:00 p.m. on May 23rd. Class day will be held on May 25th in the high school auditorium at 7:45 a.m. Commencement rehearsal will be held on May 29th in the high school auditorium at 7:45 a.m. Commencement rehearsal will be on May 29th in the high school auditorium from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. The Scholar Center for Honor Graduates will be on May 30th at 6:30 p.m. in the high school cafeteria, and commencement will be on June 1st at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium.
Thank you, Mary.
Where is the Willow Room?
The Willow Room, I think it's in Hemfeldt, I believe. It's, it's really pretty.
Is it a hotel or a?
It's, yeah, it's very pretty.
They've had it there before. No, I just, just didn't know where, yeah.
Yeah.
They all know.
Could you hear what she just said?
I can't hear.
That's all, thank you.
C W C, T C, report?
Yes, we had our meeting last evening, and they have hired as their new director, since they've retired Mr. Biondo, Brad Elwood, and their assistant director slash supervisor is Mr. Jeff Geezy, who is new also, and there will be advertising for a new principal. They're, they've dropped from four administrative positions down to three, so they're watching their budget that way. They, we advertised or approved children to go to Florida for one of their conferences, so they're getting ready to do their state skills, their skills there in Florida. And also, they were, the VOTAC was presented with an award from the intermediate unit, an Ann Sullivan Service Award for the improvement of their special needs program, so they were quite honored about that. They gave, I brought back a bunch of budgets, their budgets for this year. The superintendent forgot together and approved the budgets as well, and we did approve that budget last night, so there's a copy for you there as well.
That will be for your consideration at the May meetings.
W I U report?
Thank you, Jason.
The regular meeting, the IU board was held on March 27th. At the beginning of the meeting, they took individual and group photos, and each year they produce a, a picture of the board, and they have them hung in the room, kind of a history thing. The executive director advised the board and explained in detail that they reached agreement with their group, their bachelor levels, bachelors' level classroom workers, and it was stunning, absolutely stunning, when she, when they, she gave it to us. She reviewed it, we have 30 days to look at and discuss it, and then we'll come back and vote on it. But basically, there were huge, huge financial concessions, extreme advances in management rights, huge increases in healthcare contributions, some of them up to 50%. They will be starting in January, negotiations with the, the teachers, there are 170 teachers in January. Each school board, each IU board member was given a form to evaluate the autism conference at the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg, and they have major speakers and, uh, they are leaders in the field. And, um, so I passed out all the information, uh, for the board members to take back to their districts, and they were very pleased about it. Um, they raised seven thousand and seven hundred dollars through a Longa Burger Bingo Bash, and that is the money that they use to fund awards to teachers if they apply for them. Uh, we also handled all other routine IU business. Uh, they did announce that Mary Jane Betts is going to retire as Director of Special Ed, and there was a lot of, of personal praise for her. Initially, I thought this was something the district would want, but I realize it's not an issue, so I'll, I'll go over it anyhow. The IU met with attorney Dottie Ballinger, and I've heard her speak in, in various conferences. She's a specialist in policy development, and, uh, what they have done is worked with her to develop policies regarding technology and the, um, use management development of technology in our schools. There were multiple policies, and the, there's an overall policy on the acceptable use and communicate, of communications and information systems. Then there is a policy on the use of, uh, information, communications and information systems that have administrative regulations. They have a copyright policy, you can't just take what they have. They have data breach notification and administrative regulation, then data breach, breach notification policy, uh, in, in its totality. They have the electronic communication devices policy, and then they have something called BYOD, and what's, what it is now is kids, it's bring your own device, you bring your own device to school, your own laptop, that sort of thing. And this, this policy is pretty complicated. It, it contains permission forms to be signed by the parents, by the students, and so forth, that deal with this issue of, of when you choose to bring your own device to school. And for some children with special needs, their device is the best one for them, they're most skilled with that particular one. They also wrote a policy on social media, which is a very important, um, thing in our society today, and, you know, years ago, I can remember we talked, I talked about this anyhow. Um, then they issued a policy on social media regulations dealing with administration, and then one for employees, and a social media regulation dealing with students. So, um, like I said, I didn't bother bringing them, but, uh, um, the next meeting then will be on, it's, um, next Tuesday, yeah, yeah, next Tuesday.
Doctor, I would be interested in her contact information. Mr. Patonic and I have been working on an acceptable use policy to present to the board, um, but it sounds like she has a whole lot more in-depth.
Well, there are seven of them, and they came.
I would be delighted to have her, her contact information.
Well, you know, initially I thought I got them, but Jack, I'm gonna say it again, we don't even have a policy committee, so, you know, I didn't think much of it. I can get them for you, I'll be very happy to. At first I thought maybe I'd give them, get them and give them to Mr. Pushkar if he wanted to just read them, you know? But I'll be happy to get them for you, I might even have them in my briefcase, I don't know, I'll look and see.
Thank you.
But it's very, um, we're way behind on that, 'cause I think we're just asking for trouble. Like I said, after.
You are in charge of the chairman of the technology committee, so you could be that.
That's policy, Mike, that's policy.
Let's go back to, um, several years ago when we first were on the board, there was not a policy quote committee either. So to sit here and throw blame on, we're all, the whole board is a policy as a whole.
There was no policy committee.
Yeah, you go back and you look.
There was no policy.
You go back and you look, there was no quote policy committee.
some numbers from the Pittsburgh Business Times, so that's what I'm going to present
There was on mine.
Well, the, the board policy. to you this evening.
So to sit there and make all those comments about blame and stuff.
Um, the results, um, are something that we are pretty pleased with, so let me pull
We don't have one, Josie.
We don't.
We don't have one.
that up for you.
We're a policy committee as a whole.
What is the fundamental purpose of this school board? To develop policy.
Let's keep going, Catherine.
Go ahead and look at your policy manual, it says labels of the committees, it's not Every year that Pittsburgh Business Times publishes its guide to Pennsylvania schools, generally focusing on Western Pennsylvania, so this is obviously the two thousand twelve listed. Something the previous president did last year. school guide. Next is PSBA data is on report. Little bit about it, there are two components, uh, to the school guide, there's an honor
There, I don't have a report this month.
roll component, and that honor roll component consists of three years of PSSA data, and Thank you. Superintendent, that's your report. I would invite the board to step off the stage, because I'm gonna be using the screen the most recent year is weighted more heavily than the previous two years. for my report. They measure math, they measure reading, they measure science and writing, and in Dan, would you please, uh, start your machinery? this case, it would be from the two thousand eight, nine school year through, uh, the school year that we finished two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. Little bit about our history, in two thousand eight, there are, um, there are a hundred and four districts in our region, so in two thousand eight, you can see we were sixty-eight out of a hundred and four. Uh, we've continued to improve, and now in two thousand twelve, we are thirty-three out of a hundred and four. We're not where we want to be yet, but we certainly come a long way since two thousand eight. At the state level in two thousand seven, which was the earliest data that I could find, we were two ninety-one out of five hundred and one school districts. We continued to improve, two eighty-six, two sixty-four, and this year, we are number one thirty-four out of four ninety-seven, one thirty-four out of four ninety-seven. You'll notice that the numbers are a little different, um, a couple of the schools ceased to have high schools, so they are not, uh, measured, and one of the schools merged with another school to, I think they're the Central Valley School District now, so that's why we have less school districts to compare ourselves to. Then they have the overachiever rankings, and again, they look at three years of data, they look at math, they look at reading and science from oh eight, oh nine through ten eleven, and again, the most recent year is more heavily weighted. The percentage of students scoring at the superior level is what they look at for all of this, and according to the Pittsburgh Times, superior level is, uh, anyone scoring at the advanced or the proficient level. And the other thing they consider for the overachiever rankings is the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged, and the way they measure that is by free and reduced lunch eligibility. Studies have shown consistently that there is a relationship between socio-economic level or economically disadvantaged level and student achievement. Um, we don't necessarily ascribe to that research or that philosophy, but the research is out there that, that says students who come from wealthy homes and wealthy backgrounds generally achieve better in school than those who come from less wealthy backgrounds. So the overachiever rankings try to answer this question, which school districts do better than expectations based upon economics? So this rank takes the honor roll rank and adds the percentage of students in the district eligible for free and reduced lunch into a formula. A district finishing high on this rank is smashing expectations, and any district above the media, the median point is exceeding expectations. Our overachiever history in two thousand nine, we were number thirty-seven. We moved to number twenty-one last year, as you know, we were number four in the region. This year, we're number three in the region. Smashing expectations. Statewide, as an overachiever, in two thousand nine, we were the hundred and thirty-second most overachieving district in the state. In two thousand ten, we were the seventy-second most overachieving. Two thousand eleven, the eighteenth most overachieving district, and now in two thousand twelve, there are only ten other districts who are overachieving at a higher level than we are. Pretty proud of that. What I wanted to do, and I'm gonna go through these slides very quickly, because there's a lot of data represented, but I looked at the top forty schools in southwestern Pennsylvania on the honor roll, starting with the number one school in the state, which was Bethel Park, okay? No, excuse me, Upper St. Clair, not Bethel Park. Upper St. Clair, their honor roll ranking was number one, they're, they're the top school in our region. Okay, their poverty level, as you can see, is four point six, so four point six percent of their students are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and their overachieving ranking is twenty. We, on the other hand, are ranked at number thirty-three. Our poverty level was listed by the Pittsburgh Business Times as forty-four point two percent, and then again, that's an aggregate of that three-year period, and our overachiever ranking was three. So in other words, we're taking this honor roll ranking, factoring in the poverty ranking to come up with the overachiever ranking. And I want you to notice, as we're flipping through the poverty rankings of schools who are scoring both above us and below us on this honor roll ranking. Mount Lebanon is the number two school in our region, okay, they're at eight percent poverty. North Allegheny is number three at three point five percent, and you can see where they're overachieving. They're the thirty-fifth most overachieving, uh, in, in the region, we're still number three. Nine point two percent for Hampton Township, nine point seven for South Fayette, and it goes on, seventeen point five for Fox Chapel. I told you I was gonna go quickly here. Peters Township, three point three percent of their students are on free and reduced lunch, they're number seven in the region, but they're only the fifty-sixth over, most overachieving school. Quaker Valley is fourteen point two percent poverty, Franklin Regional at ten point nine, Penn Trafford at twelve, a couple of Westmoreland County schools here. Norwin is not real far from us, they're at thirty-three percent poverty, we're at forty-four, so there's about eleven points, uh, percentage points that, that separate us, um, and they are the thirty-ninth most overachieving school in this, in the region. Bethel Park, nine point nine percent, eight point three percent, you're seeing a trend here, all of these schools have much less poverty than we have. Seneca Valley's at ten point eight, Greater Latrobe, twenty-three point four, a little bit more similar to us, West Jefferson Hills, only twelve percent, Beaver Area, sixteen percent, Moon at sixteen, Avonworth at ten point nine. We get to Ligonier Valley, they're very similar to us, they're, they're at thirty-eight point six percent poverty and forty-four, we're at forty-four point two. They're the number twenty-one, they're ranked, uh, as their honor roll ranking in our region, and they're the sixth most overachieving school. Interesting thing about Ligonier Valley is, if you remember, um, a couple of years ago, they had a, a battle there about merging, and they ended up closing one of their high schools. So their number, their N became a lot smaller, because many of their students went where? They went to cyber school. Okay, so, um, although this is a, a reflection of the students who are currently enrolled in their schools, it's probably not an accurate reflection of their entire student population. Of Cannon McMillan at twenty point six, North Hills at eighteen point six, West Allegheny at twenty point two. Greensburg Salem, again, not, not real dissimilar from us, they're at thirty-eight point two and we're at forty-four point two. Their ranking was, uh, twenty-fifth in the region, we're at thirty-third in the region, so we're close in ranking as well. Uh, we are the third most overachieving in the region, and they are the fourth most overachieving in the region. So we're kinda neck and neck with Greensburg Salem. Chiski area, less poverty. Hemp Field Area at twenty-one point four percent. They're ranked at number twenty-seven in the region, South Butler at number twenty-eight, Montour at number twenty-nine. Riverview, again, very close to us, thirty-seven point four, about, um, what, three, seven points separating us there. They're thirtieth in the region, but they're not overachie, overachieving to the extent we are. Gateway, twenty-eight point three percent poverty, they're close to us in, in ranking and, and achievement with much less poverty. Blackhawk, much less poverty, but, but we're ranked about the same. Then we go to Freedom, uh, we're ranked ahead of Freedom Area, their poverty level is still less than ours. Freeport, the same thing. South Park, Plumbura, and Brentwood. Riverside and Western Beaver. So as you can see, every one of the top forty, of all the top forty districts in, in our region, we, we have the most students on, on free and reduced lunch. Then I wanted to look at the overachiever rankings, okay? Big Beaver Falls consistently is, is the number one overachiever in the state. Um, they are ranked seventieth in the region in terms of, uh, their PSSA scores, uh, on their honor roll ranking, but look at their poverty level, it's almost at seventy percent. So what they're doing with, with those kids, um, exceeding expectations by a long shot. Jeanette, number two, seventy-nine percent, they're, they're seventy-ninth in the region in terms of their honor roll ranking, but again, close to seventy percent poverty. And here's us at the thirty-third, number thirty-three on the honor roll, and the third most overachieving district. We think this is very good news. We looked at the hundred and thirty-five top-scoring districts in the state and what, where their poverty levels are, and if you look, Peters Township is, is obviously very low, and as it goes up and up and up and up and up of those top hundred and thirty-five school districts, we are right there, um, at forty-six point one percent. I think there were only one or two schools that were, um, at greater poverty, one of them being Southern Fulton. Southern Fulton's a very high-achieving school, um, with a very high poverty rate as well. So we're thinking about talking to them and finding out some of the things that they're doing that are, that are causing them to be successful. So looking at our, our grade levels, I wanted to see how the grade levels shook out in all of this. Uh, we have a little bit of work to do at our high school, leveling grade eleven in two thousand eleven, um, they were number forty-six in the region out of all the high schools. Um, this year, we did drop to number fifty-eight, and you can see where the, the math scores and the reading, writing and science scores all fell. Um, we're quite proud of our writing score, we obviously have some work to do in the area of science, and hopefully with the, uh, the new materials and the aligned curriculum, um, and some of the things that Mrs. DeCassello talked to you about last week, we'll be able to pull that score up. Grade eight, we were fifty-two in two thousand eleven, grade eight moved up to number thirty-nine out of a hundred and forty-seven eighth grades in the region. Look at those, again, science is our weak point, but we have ninety-one percent advanced or proficient in math. All of these schools have much less poverty than we have. Seneca Valley's at 10.8. Greater Latrobe, 23.4, a little bit more similar to us. West Jefferson Hills, only 12%. Beaver Area, 16%. Moon at 16. Avonworth at 10.9. We get to Ligonier Valley, they're very similar to us. They're, they're at 38.6% poverty and 44, we're at 44.2. They're the number 21, they're ranked as their honor roll ranking in our region and they're the sixth most overachieving school. Interesting thing about Ligonier Valley is if you remember, a couple of years ago, they had a battle there about merging and they ended up closing one of their high schools. So their number, their N became a lot smaller because many of their students went where? They went to cyber school. Okay, so although this is a reflection of the students who are currently enrolled in their schools, it's probably not an accurate reflection of their entire student population. Waukano McMillan at 20.6. North Hills at 18.6. West Allegheny at 20.2. Greensburg Salem, again, not, not real dissimilar from us. They're at 38.2 and we're at 44.2. Their ranking was 25th in the region, we're at 33rd in the region, so we're close in ranking as well. We are the third most overachieving in the region and they are the fourth most overachieving in the region. So we're kinda neck and neck with Greensburg Salem. Kiskey Area, less poverty. Hemp Field Area at 21.4%. They're ranked at number 27 in the region. South Butler at number 28. Montour at number 29. Riverview, again, very close to us, 37.4. About, what, 3, 7 points separating us there. They're 30th in the region, but they're not overachieving to the extent we are. Gateway, 28.3% poverty. They're close to us in, in ranking and achievement with much less poverty. Blackhawk, much less poverty, but, but we're ranked about the same. Then we go to Freedom. We're ranked ahead of Freedom Area. Their poverty level is still less than ours. Freeport, the same thing. South Park. Plumbura. And Brentwood. Riverside and Western Beaver. So as you can see, every one of the top 40, of all the top 40 districts in our region, we, we have the most students on, on free and reduced lunch. Then I wanted to look at the overachiever rankings, okay? Big Beaver Falls consistently is, is the number one overachiever in the state. They are ranked 70th in the region in terms of their P S S A scores on their honor roll ranking, but look at their poverty level, it's almost at 70%. So what they're doing with, with those kids exceeding expectations by a long shot. Jeanette, number two, 79, they're, they're 79th in the region in terms of their honor roll ranking, but again, close to 70% poverty. And here's us at the 33rd, number 33 on the honor roll and the third most overachieving district. We think this is very good news. We looked at the 135 top-scoring districts in the state and what, where their poverty levels are. And if you look, Peters Township is, is obviously very low and as it goes up and up and up and up and up of those top 135 school districts, we are right there at 46.1%. I think there were only one or two schools that were at greater poverty, one of them being Southern Fulton. Southern Fulton's a very high-achieving school with a very high poverty rate as well. So we're thinking about talking to them and finding out some of the things that they're doing that are, that are causing them to be successful. So looking at our, our grade levels, I wanted to see how the grade levels shook out in all of this. We have a little bit of work to do at our high school, leveling grade 11 in 2011. They were number 46 in the region out of all the high schools. This year, we did drop to number 58. And you can see where the, the math scores and the reading, writing and science scores all fell. We're quite proud of our writing score. We obviously have some work to do in the area of science and hopefully with the new materials and the aligned curriculum and some of the things that Mrs. DeCassello talked to you about last week, we'll be able to pull that score up. Grade eight, we were 52 in 2011. Grade eight moved up to number 39 out of 147 eighth grades in the region. Look at those. Again, science is our weak point, but we have 91% advanced or proficient in math, 95% in reading and 92% in writing. Grade seven, grade seven dropped a little bit also. They were at 88% superior in mathematics, but grade seven had a little bit of difficulty in reading and we've, we've addressed that and we're very anxious to see how this year's scores come out because we have made some, made some adjustments to what's happening with seventh grade reading. If you look at grade six, they went from 95th in the region to 76th in the region with a 92% above advanced or proficient in math and 72% in reading. Grade five, they moved up 49 spaces, places with 91% superior in math, 76 in reading and 85% superior in writing. Look at fourth grade's science score, guys, 100% superior in science, 96 in mathematics. They went from number 120 last year to number 48 this year. So we're really proud of what's going on in fourth grade. And in third grade, they moved from number 92 to number 71 with a 91% of our students being advanced or proficient in math and 85% in reading. Pittsburgh Times says, we learned, and this is a quote, "We learned several years ago that we can't treat students as the variables. Every year, we have these kids come in with challenges even beyond their economic disadvantages. We treat our kids as constants and what we do with them is the variable. Some students require more assistance for any number of reasons." Another critical component employed by all three top overachieving districts is an individualized approach to learning. For South Moreland, that meant adopting the professional learning community developed by Rick DeForre. It's a very collaborative model where teachers meet three times per week. So we were actually interviewed and cited in the Pittsburgh Times because of the success we're having. So in summary, what did I tell you? We've shown continuous improvement both in statewide honor roll rankings, regional honor roll rankings and overachiever rankings over the past five years. And we're really, really pleased about that, but we're certainly not satisfied because our sights are set at a much higher level. So as an administrative team, we've decided that we're going to develop several goals to carry us through the next couple of years and we're gonna call those stretch goals. Stretch goals are going to require us to push beyond our comfort zones and reach a little bit further to get kids achieving at higher levels than we ever thought they could. We're gonna discover new possibilities and we're gonna bump up against our own limits as we work at the very edge of our capacities to ensure that students and adults are learning at the highest levels possible. Because we understand that when adults are learning, students are learning and when adults stop learning, the learning curve of the students slows down tremendously. So we're going to ask the Board of Education to formally adopt the district stretch goals, which will be, which we will be presenting to you within a month or two. And in presenting these goals, it'll be necessary for administration to provide the necessary leadership resources and support to ensure that they can be met. And if the Board adopts these goals, it's incumbent upon the Board to provide that same leadership, those same resources and that same support to ensure that our teachers can keep doing what they do best in our classrooms. So I thank you for your attention and that concludes my report for this evening. And for those members of my faculty who are still here, I congratulate you and I thank you for the work you do every day.
Proceed back to the-
You got there late.
You only had an hour.
You need more time than they had.
Were there a good number of people?
It was pretty bad.
Before I open up the solicitor's report, I just wanted to thank the teachers and the staff for helping to get these great rankings and just keep up the good work. Solicitor's report?
You have it.
Okay.
Anything else, Board member?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments. On Tuesday, May 27th, I had the honor of attending the ninth grade poetry reading. I was very impressed at the depth of these poems and it was unbelievable when you read these poems. I don't know if anybody probably could get a copy. I'm sure Mr. Koffcheck could probably get us a copy of these. I was really blown away and they're very deep and it was very impressive just to see how, how well they actually do. Okay, and I also attended the sophomore evening of the arts at SES. That was also a wonderful showcase for our students' talents and achievements. And it was good to be reminded that we do indeed have a plaudible talent in our very own district and we should support this. It's easy to go down the negativity path to be a Debbie Downer, but as a board, district and community, we should constantly strive to promote and see the good, to promote the positive. It's right in front of us. And what I passed, what I passed around was, the Daily Courier has recognized that our students have done a lot of public service throughout the year. And it appeared in Saturday, April 14th and it says, they have laurels and lances, they give compliments to kids, to things and then they also lance things. Under the laurel, it says, "To South Moreland School District students from the primary center to the high school, high school students during the past year have participated in events that have aided local charities and various organizations. They have shown selflessness in their attitude and their willingness to help." So I thought that was very commendable. Just a couple more comments here. What is success? If you asked 10 people that question, I'm sure you would have 10 different answers. Success, in my opinion, is not measured by two letters in front of your name. It comes in all shapes and forms. Not everyone is cut out to attend college. Some get a two-year associate degree or attend a technical or trade school, or they go to the military or they pursue other avenues. We need plumbers, electricians, masons, mechanics, secretaries, et cetera. We need all of these vocations. They are all part of the puzzle that makes our society work. So success is not the same for everyone. I believe success is how you use your education and intelligence to make the world a better place. That's what really matters. So let's stand up for education, no matter what form it takes. Thank you.
Do they also, do we have any comments?
Josie, they were saying on television this morning that the VOTEC schools in Pittsburgh are moving into working with the community colleges because they have those programs. Have they talked about that up at the VOTEC?
Not that, not yet. I haven't heard.
You might ask them about that. You know, the VOTECs have kind of the same programs. They're talking about Marcellus. And they're saying they wanna make public education move into the community colleges because, you know, those kids don't wanna go to college, but they need certifications, they need certificates and things.
They have talked about looking into the future of bringing in some kind of education about Marcellus Shell, knowing that they know that that's the future and that they should start looking into, but I can ask about the community college.
But I understand the community college is putting a real push on this. And in Allegheny College, they, they were complaining like our schools do, they don't have enough kids at the VOTEC. But they're saying more kids would go if they had option to move into that community college program to get those certificates and that. So you might wanna bring that up.
Okay, sure.
Anything else? Citizens' comments? Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed? Process, get ready, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.